So this is the Business Finance and Operations Subcommittee meeting. And it is October 4th. And we have warrants transfers on the agenda, and that's about it.
That's it.
So, we have two very small transfers. One at a principal's request, $134.92 within his own budget. And one for $2,886.25 to fund a copier at Page. And at the middle school, because when we did the original fit, we took out the Rizzo's. So, we're just putting some money from unemployment into the, that's $2,886.25. Those are our two transfers this week.
Alright.
And we have one vendor warrant, voucher number 2054. In the amount of $601,793.41. The breakdown of it is inclusive to you. You can review it, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. If you want to see any backup to any of the projects, I have that with me as well.
That is a down payment for the senior banquet, from the student activity account of the high school.
Evergreen Center?
That is a special ed cost.
Okay. Georgetown Iron Works?
That is for the building out back, the cost of the building.
They put in the building?
Yeah, they went out back. They haven't put the door on it yet, but they expect to do that later this week. And since I didn't want them to wait another three weeks to get paid, we're producing the check, but we're holding it here until it's completed.
Ossie seeding?
I'm sorry, what?
Ossie seeding?
Repairs to the bleachers at the high school, and inspection of the bleachers at Bagnall, Donahue, and the high school.
Inside?
Inside, inside the gyms, yes. They have to be inspected every year. They do it just before basketball season, which seems flies.
Why not? Like, Bagnall is like, too stor- too like seeds up.
Same as Donahue, we have to have them inspected every year.
High school, you don't want them falling off two seeds.
But the way they're built, like...
Yeah, it'd be hard for them to not.
Yeah, it'd be hard.
High school ones more usually has repairs to it every year as well, the inspection. A, it's bigger, and C, it's older.
NCS Pearson?
Those are special ed materials testing and evaluation sheets. They're doing good today, I've been recent at basketball.
Yep.
Special ed, oh my god. How's the progress on the air handles at Bagnall? I mean, at Page?
Oh, it's all done.
So we won't have any open windows this winter, right?
That's the plan. If only Jack were still with us.
It's funny, actually, the price of oil's starting to go up again.
We, I should see him this weekend.
On the fair? Are you working there too?
Did you ask NCS Pearson?
Yes. Those special ed materials, testing materials, and documents.
Did you ask Quinn's Locksmith? I apologize if I...
It's okay. Quinn's Locksmith, that was the rekeying of the middle, middle school and the high school.
Oh, okay.
All the exterior doors.
Okay. And with limited keys.
We have a new key distribution.
What would it take to go to a...
Well, I think it's a couple thousand dollars, but it has to be connected into a system, you know. One day, I think maybe with either renovation or new building.
I mean, that way you'd know who's coming and who's going.
Palm Springs Sales?
Oh, just the athletic purchases for, no. I think they had like tennis balls and hockey, he was buying his supplies for the year.
For the year.
It was a lo- it was a long, yeah, it was a long list of things.
Seven thousand dollars worth of it.
Hockey pucks and all that stuff.
The incidental things.
Oh, I can sign it, sorry.
Yeah, so that'd be a good thing.
Having no further business?
That concludes the Business and Finance Subcommittee.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so, this is the Policy Subcommittee for the Kentucket School Committee. Our Chair, Wayne Adams, isn't here this evening. And so, Lisa and Chris, you're both on the committee, and Brian, you're joining us.
Just sitting in.
Just sitting in, okay, very good. So first, we have the chemical management policy. And you'll rec- you hear me? You recall that last year, one of the main things that we were attempting to do, attempting to accomplish, was to get a chemical management process and procedure in place. And Greg has worked out a draft of the chemical management policy, and we're just finishing that up. So this is more along the lines of an early discussion to prepare you for the next time we get together, when it will come forward. So the chemical management policy will describe everything from procurement of chemicals or chemical agents, to how we dispose of them, and everything in between. And we've got to comply with the OSHA regulations, as well as the SDS regulations that we have in place. SDS is about, how do we use those materials, like for instance, how the custodians use those materials, and manage them while they're here on campus. So, this is ju- just to let you know that we're about complete with our draft, and we'll be bringing that for the next time.
So are there, like, example policies that we're drawing this from, or are we just pretty much coming up with it on our own?
Greg could maybe describe a little of his research.
You'd be surprised how many schools really don't have one of these.
I'm not surprised, actually.
So, with all policies, you know, imitation is a serious form of flattery, so I look around to see if there's any that fit our needs. There was two or three that were okay, and I kind of combined them. So, I suppose you could say it's a plagiarized, three-time original document. So, but it did pull some things. A lot of things are just over the top for what we do. But a lot of stuff is very basic, up and including one of the bigger things I found in all the policies, is the part about parents sending their kids to school with things, like wipes and all that stuff. We have to kind of get that down to, and make sure they're bringing stuff in that's acceptable. That's a big part of the policy. That fits into that too, so, that's where it's going to be coming from.
And so, we're talking about, like, custodian chemicals, and I haven't even thought about those types of things.
How they'll be stored, how they'll be inventoried.
And any science-related materials, or anything cafeteria?
How they're disposed of.
Okay.
So, we'll be bringing that forward in the next meeting, but I just wanted to introduce that as maybe one of our upcoming agenda items.
Do you have any big concerns right now about things that we're storing not appropriately, or disposing of inappropriately, throwing it out the back door?
Greg came up, Greg Haddon came up with the implementation of a protocol for all the custodians, so it's right there in everybody's area. And, you know, it's a great reference sheet for many of the products that we're using. So I think we're getting better and better at what we do. So, before he did that, I had some concerns about what was going on. But, just the other day, for instance, I went in and asked this question about the SDS sheets for, from one of the custodians.
You mean MDS?
I'm sorry, MDS.
Material D S.
And the custodian was able to go over, reference the sheet, talk about it, so they're very comfortable with it. Hi Joanna.
We're buying all our supplies from what place right now? That's a vendor, that the chemicals are safe to be around people? If they're not, we know where to lock them up. And so, yeah, it's being done better, but a policy, especially in light of going forward with the MSP, is probably a good idea to have one around.
Yeah, definitely. So Greg, do you want to do the facilities policy EBH?
Sure. Superintendent asked me at any time over the summer to take a quick look through some policies. We don't want to inundate you with a whole bunch of them all at once, but we decided to pick a few here and there. The first one I noticed was, we now have two use of facility policies. One that we just passed in December, the more extensive one we saw of how things, and there was an old one, EBH. So we'd like to basically ask you to authorize us to delete that one, so we don't have two use facility policies in our book. The second one, EAA1, is the walkers and riders policy for bus. And there's a whole few things we should look at in there, but the bigger one is, it has us charging $180 fee, we obviously don't do that anymore. So we should probably update it. I mean, I didn't want to take the lead and tell you what to cross out, but I mean, obviously, you'd take out the $180 thing, you'd take out the mile and a half thing. I made the decision a long time ago that, to make that with the sidewalk situation in these three towns, it wasn't tenable, and we kind of afford to bring people here anyways. And we should probably add the part, although, we're since transportation does not provide the students for choice or inter-district school choice in grades one to six, obviously there's no inter-district choice for seven to 12, we should probably add the line about not having, providing transportation for school choice in the seven to 12 section as well. And, that would be an update to that policy.
Yep.
Do, do we have to say that we don't provide transportation to school choice? I thought that that was actually against...
It's a redundancy, but it's, it's clear.
Makes it clear.
Yeah, it makes it clear in this policy.
Now, if we were to make those changes, are we then saying that we will provide transportation to anybody? Because I think there's still some pockets, like, back down there, they don't have buses bring them.
No, there's, there's bus stops back in there now too.
They don't get picked up?
They don't get on the bus?
Because I had somebody last year ask me, or mention that.
There's bus, there's bus stops, and there's nobody that has to walk more than, last time I checked, there was nothing more than 250 feet from anybody's house to a bus stop.
Okay. Because I think last year, some of the neighborhood back down there weren't getting picked up. They pick up part of the neighborhood, but then they don't pick up like where Summer Suite Lane is, or Drive, or whatever that one is.
No, they can, that's absolutely, there's no restriction on that.
Okay, so that they need to contact the bus company if they're not presently...
But, I mean, is the bus driver telling them they can't get on the bus?
I think the bus just doesn't stop there, and they didn't know that they could get on the bus. But there are people who probably didn't pay before, and they used to drop off, and they didn't realize that they no longer had to do that.
I didn't realize there's many people left that didn't know that.
They would have to go to a designated stop.
I don't think there's any stop, I mean, there's a stop up there. I mean, they may have to walk down Summer Street, I know there's some, especially in Merrimack, there's a lot of long cul-de-sacs that they have to come out of the cul-de-sac, because the bus can't go backwards. But they have to walk down the street, those are about the longest walks. But I didn't think there was anybody, I thought that the last thing was 250 to 300 feet was the longest anybody could go.
But that's not in here, so...
Well, no, it'll change every year, the thing, the bus stops change every year, so I wouldn't say that, I would just say, but I mean, if people think that there's, and I get called beginning of the year, and I try to adjust things as I can, if there's someone that thinks that they're being not served, they should by all means contact me, and I can work with the bus company. They won't, the bus company won't interact with them, they'll say, could you forward that information of the school, and Greg will call us, and we'll try to figure something out. But, I didn't think there was anybody.
Yeah, there's a few people, I know.
I know there's...
And I think it's more, but they didn't know.
They do, they look just up, they go around the back, yeah, I mean, if it's just to add a bus stop along a route, that's very easy to do, I'll say, can you now stop at something something Chestnut Street, and the bus company's like, sure. It's when they have to go off their current path of grid that becomes a problem. But, this week it was actually very easy, we had a few people we had to change for, because usually the changes will happen when you're an incoming kindergarten student, you already know where they are.
Right.
And so we'll adjust to that to next year. So the first year, we'll try to work something with them, but after that, we'll try to adjust the route to encompass them, if they have to go very far.
I mean, I think it's the people, it's the high school that they're talking about, it's not like, I haven't heard it from the towns, but...
No, I was saying, I didn't hear that, we'll look at the bus routes, but I'm pretty sure they do have a fairly extensive path through there, they go through from that area there. Interesting.
Well, I had, I had to request once to get our stop moved, because when, I used to have to walk up the street, my kids had to walk up the street to like, a different driveway. And then, those kids stopped taking the bus, so we were walking to somebody else's house, and we were the only people using that stop. So I can't remember, I called the bus company, I don't remember what the process was, but I put in a formal request to move it to my driveway. But sometimes that happens where the stop is someplace because
Right.
there were a lot of kids there, and then those kids start driving, and the bus company's not aware, because they're still enrolled as somebody who's going to school.
Yeah, we make those adjustments, they're pretty much every year, did they make that adjustment for you?
Yeah, they made the adjustment, it wasn't an issue.
Yeah, usually after the first couple weeks, the bus drivers are pretty well know who's where.
You know, these are people who, who were supposed to pay before, and didn't want to pay, so they drove, and then weren't, weren't aware of the fact that they should be getting picked up. They thought they still had to walk, even though they got rid of the fee.
Yeah, I mean, no, 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 if there's a bus going anywhere near, they're entitled to get on that bus, absolutely. Yeah, there's none of our buses are, I mean, most buses can hold, I mean, 70 people at the elementary level, because they can fit three across, but to get to the middle high school, it cuts down a little bit, but none of our buses I see come rolling in.
Away seven high school kids.
Yeah, and I'm still waiting for the numbers from them, because we're going out to bid for transportation. It's up for bid this year, and I want to, I've got the bus routes obviously, but I want to know how many kids are on each bus, I'm still waiting for that census, but as I watch kids get out of the buses in the morning and things like that, I don't see anybody, any buses, kids standing up on themselves. Shouldn't be an issue of getting on a bus anywhere.
Anything else?
So I mean, do you want me to make just those adjustments we talked about, or do you want to see it again? Or, do you want me to just make a quick adjustment?
I think I prefer seeing the changes. If we can like, do it in a way that it marks it through the word processing, so we can see what's being deleted or added, or whatever, to mark it up.
So you're okay, obviously, you're okay with deleting the old facilities?
The intent of the change, yeah, that, that...
That's okay. Alright, so I can, I'll make a suggestion, I'll, I'll type, I'll have this retyped, I don't think we, I don't know if I had that in Word or not, maybe Mary Ann does. And if not, and if not, it's not a big deal to retype this. And I can show you the edits and the changes, and we can send them, we can have them available for you at the next meeting. Again, this, again, it's not a big rush on this, it's just more tidy stuff.
And do we want to put it walkers and riders, or just make it transportation?
We can change the name if you'd like, to Transportation, no Kentucket Transportation Policy, or something like that.
That would be better.
Okay. I can remember that.
Are there any other changes in the body of it, other than the second paragraph?
Yeah, oh yeah, there'd be, there'll be a few things. Like I said, I want to put the school choice part of it in grade seven to 12, that's in grades one to six. About the participation choice. Obviously, inter-district won't apply to the seven to 12, because that's all inter-district. But I'd take that choice situation and move it into the 12. Though, we take out the $180 fee, and any reference to the one and a half mile section would probably be...
Is there a need to have kindergarten broken out from one to the six anymore?
No, I think they just separated, because it's just a dip, because kindergarten has two different transportation cycles, because they, some people take a half day, and then there's, there's the grade one to six, which would, inter-district would be a thing where seven to 12 is not. So I think they just broke into three different types of transportation situation we have right now. If you're okay with that, we can keep that part of it as well.
Anything else? Okay, that concludes the Policy Committee.
Subcommittee's order.
And Doug is right here.
Right.
So I'm putting a big A B next to his. And we have Lisa, and we have Joanna with us.
So our one agenda item was just to discuss the state of the logos, and, you know, how we're moving away from Geronimo to the original.
Yeah, so we're just looking, I'm looking for some direction from you all.
Yeah.
So like, I understand that we have our logo in place, that, that's fine, and the word Satchel. So now, the next level that we wanted to get to, was, how will that be represented on our teams, as an example, or some of the other areas that we use different logos? And in the past, really, there's been no direction. Kids and teachers and adults have gone kind of in any way that they want, so that they use logos from sports teams, national sports teams, and other kinds of things, some just generic. Like in yearbooks, for instance, I think if you, as Lisa did, went through the yearbooks, you'd see some just generic things that companies have as stock images
Right.
that were used. So, this item's about, like, what would be helpful as a next step? Because eventually, I think you all want to have a policy of some kind.
Well, I think what we should have are de facto brand guidelines for the Kentucket school system. Do we have anything along those lines now, like what color, green?
No.
What, okay.
And I, I think that's like, the, the letterhead.
Yeah.
The administration paper, you know, the paperwork that we send out, the report cards, and, and anything like that, that should be an administration, you know, determination, this is what we're going to use. But everything, once it comes together, through, through the administration, our letterhead and paperwork, sports teams, now it has to go to policy, and we have to make it a policy.
Yeah, I think we need some kind of guideline, pending guidelines, so that when you see the, excuse me, the images, you immediately think Kentucket, right?
Right, right, you don't have 20 different people. So, in terms of developing the guidelines, what would be the best process for that? I could certainly put together a template, and we start to figure out which shade of green do we use for, you know, our, whenever we use Kentucket, what font are we using, which image are we using, if you're going to use an image?
Well, I think some of the, the imprint kinds of things, you might have some experience there, Andy, that would be helpful. I'm thinking that maybe if I go to the kids in the high school and work with them about what would be some logos that you think would be appealing to you, and acceptable to us, right?
Yep.
And I don't think that's going to be a terrible conversation to have with them, because they've worked, they already have the message about how we have to be more appropriate in our, our presentation.
Yeah.
And like, I was talking with Brian, and it, and our conversation reflected some that Jonathan has had with kids in the school, and Ken too, at the middle school, is, they're really accustomed to that large P with Kentucket spelled out, or some other kinds of things next to it. And so, you know, I could work with maybe the middle school and high school kids, and bring back some of their thinking around what would be good, and I don't think it's going to be that complicated.
I don't think so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, you know, the, the process we went through on the individual bringing it to us, that it was a negative thing for our district. I think if they choose the P, or Kentucket, you know, I think that'll kind of bring it, we've, we've met them halfway, you know?
We really have a lot of that. You know, if you look at some of our uniforms already, many of our uniforms already reflect that kind of thinking, yeah.
But we need to make it, this is, this is our standing uniform, this is the way it's going to be.
Right.
Yeah, and give them so many options.
Yeah.
That's right, exactly.
And, so going forward, is it the school that's purchasing all the uniforms? Because I know, the school hasn't purchased the uniforms in the past, and I think that's what's caused some of the problems, is they're being purchased by all these individual groups. Like, I think hockey was purchased by an individual.
The coach.
So that's where we need a policy. I should think a policy that says, you know, your uniform must conform to our brand guidelines.
Here are the standards, right?
Yeah. And I'm, and I'm sure the athletic director, once, once we have a policy in place, the athletic director will know, this is what it has to be.
That's right.
Right.
But Joanna brings up a good point. The funding seemed to be sort of the impetus for going in so many directions, so, when it got down to individuals were actually purchasing uniforms, they had a lot of control.
Right.
And, and it wasn't really that they were wanting the control, it's that they were doing it, and they did it.
They're doing all the work, right, right.
Exactly. So now, with our budget, with your budget, you have a line item in there that's going to be renewing uniforms on a more regular basis, so, when you take back that financial control, you're also taking back some of the other control, and it's just natural. So I think it'll work out really well.
And I think you're looking at, with a standard logo, you're looking at a cost factor, you know, we don't have, they're not changing the logo every uniform, so you're not paying that upfront fee to get the logo, you know, done.
Yeah, I'm not so sure that, that all of our uniforms have even come from the same location. I think our uniforms have been ordered from all, many different vendors.
Yeah.
And, I'm not sure all the vendors have had the same access to, you know, everything that you might want. So, sometimes I think that's how we've ended up with like, 30 different Ps, it's like, somebody wants to use this vendor, and they, they have this selection of six Ps, and then, so you, you may have to start standardizing your uniform vendor also.
Well, that's why I like, we need to pick a font for...
Right.
Yeah.
If you choose a font, that's got to be, you know, it has to have a half inch stroke, it's got to be this color, you know, then they're all going to be able to standardize that.
Right.
That's right. So, Andy, if you come up with some ideas around like, font and color, and some of the imprint kinds of things?
Yeah.
That would be helpful. And I'll work with the high school and middle school principals, and Dan, or where I'm getting some ideas from kids. And then, for the next meeting, we probably could put things together and
Okay.
have something to improve.
Who's responsible for like, getting letterhead printed up now, or like, just...
Well, most of our letterhead...
Like to understand like, what fonts we are using now?
It comes straight from the computer. I mean, they're all set up in the computers.
Alright, alright.
So, we don't buy a lot...
Or like, we've got this printed up?
Right, we don't have letterhead, it's just printed on the color printer or not the color printer, depending on its importance, but
Okay.
It's like, when we lost, we lose staff, we just go into the thing on the memo and just change the names, and you're all set.
Yeah.
So, it's easier to...
There may not be a lot with our administrative letterhead to change.
No, not even, even at the elementary schools, a lot of the stuff is pre-printed, so even if you just redid the one, they just have to print them out again. It's all, we don't tend to a lot of, we don't do a lot of outprinting. Unless it's like the farmers, or things like that, that's more fancy.
Alright, so I'll, I can get at least a framework for brand guidelines put together, and we can fill in stuff.
That'd be good.
And then, if you can work with students, figure out what they might want.
Yeah.
Obviously, I, I think going to a P-type thing would be a really good thing. I don't know how some of the people in the room might feel about that from the, the public hearing we had, but I think if the kids decide that's a good, you know, like Brian said, a good midway point to meet at, I think that could be a really good solution.
Well, it's not that we're abandoning our logo.
No.
It's that, for purposes of sports, the logo doesn't really meet that need.
Yeah, no, no.
Yeah, we're not going to have that.
No, if you put that on a football helmet, you wouldn't be able to see what it is.
That's for a different purpose.
Yeah.
So we need something that's more sports oriented.
Right.
And like I said, when we started, this whole process started, was if they were going to change the logo, that I felt it should be the students that, that make the decision on what they want to, I mean, it's their uniform, not mine.
Yeah, we can come up with some ideas, that's for sure. So just bring that back, next time, we'll work something out. And then, once we put it together, it could go to policy. it together, it could go to policy, and be considered in the policy committee and go forward.
Right.
Sounds good.
Yeah, it should be like the teams are licensing the, uh, the brand from the high school, or the, the school district, and they're getting their own uniforms.
Alright, sounds okay.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, sounds good. Alright, so we'll conclude our meeting, and thanks very much.